I think it's something simple, we could just have a quick discussion.
Sorry for the late start.
Is there anything you're gonna narrow it down to?
Do we have it narrowed down to one and two?
Yeah, I think it was one and two, looking at him initially.
And if he could fix the one issue on number two, is that what one is kind of leaning towards?
I like number two. Probably the best, I think it's probably the cleanest looking image. Doesn't have too much going on, it's not too busy.
I like number two also, except for the tongue.
That tongue, yeah.
I agree, I like number two.
I like number two.
I'll make a motion to approve drawing number two as the official logo for the Suri Mustangs with the tongue fixed.
I'll second that.
I'll second that.
Aberly?
Yes.
Mice?
Yes.
Who knows?
Yes.
Whoa?
Yes.
Okay, with that, Mr. Gertie, before he starts, I had talked to him a little bit about the school committee which has never gotten off the ground because of the COVID. I talked to him about relooking at the committee and making it smaller. I think there was too many people involved initially. So he's been working on some things and kind of narrowed it down. So that's kind of the start of what Nicole wants, Doc, and stuff. And he put some information together for that tonight.
I just want to give you some information. We had a heating slash air conditioning unit in a portable that went out a couple of weeks ago. We had them bypassed, it was a compressor, so they didn't bypass a couple of things. And we didn't get heat in the portable, but we had to replace it. We got the quote in a couple of days ago and it's ninety or eighty-nine hundred dollars for this unit. So just want to let you know that when you see that, we're gonna have to replace it. But I'm checking on a few more things, but just want to let you know if you see the bill coming in, that's why the unit went out. Next item I have is that Robin Baum was gonna resign as the head basketball coach. Just want to let you know, she would like to be the junior varsity coach instead. She would like to sit down, be the junior varsity coach. So we will be opening that position up soon. And then, I didn't even know all of you carpet bids. We did have one from, what was it? Flooring contract, flooring and carpet one, iKeating. There was, our contract flooring was eighteen thousand two ten and iKeating was sixteen thousand one forty-four. It's up to you if you would like the hallways carpeted. If not, that's okay, I just want to give that other bid for you guys to look at.
I really appreciate that you put this capital expenditure list together. I think that before we decide on carpeting, we should really talk, and it's up to the board, but I think we should talk about where we are, if we as a board agree with, you know, your kind of plan here or we should prioritize some of these or whatever. So I think, I don't know, that's my thoughts. We should talk about this and where that fall, where the carpet falls in relation to what we want to accomplish ultimately. What about, because the legislators now are done, what are we getting for funds? And how can we use any of that for this?
Right, but for the carpet, you said?
Well, for any of those one to three years.
Right, right, I did budget this year in the building line item for carpet or whatever item I believe. Like I had eighty-five thousand dollars budgeted for this year and I think there was, I don't remember how much left over. Sixty thousand left, I do believe, in that line item. So we do have money for carpet for this year. And when we're talking about this, just want to let you know for the budget this year, we've been looking at it really close the last couple of weeks. And I think we're gonna be in the black, we're gonna sit really good for this year. And we have seventy-one thousand dollars left in that line item. So next year, what I did, and we've been working on next year's budget as well. And I did an expenditure report, putting everything that we would really like to see happen. And then we got the revenue this week. And I'm gonna have to shave about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars off of what I really wanted. So by next, next board meeting, we'll have the budget ready. I'll have it all, all the numbers matching for next year. And like you said, we have to go through and prioritize what we want. But that's just like I said, we don't have, I would like to stabilize the budget for a few years before we decide to jump into a big project. However, we do need to see in the future what we'd like, you know, classrooms, new gym, locker rooms, restroom, you name it. Right now, I just think that's kind of like in the future, whatever in the future. But right now, I think that we can handle carpet. But that's up to, you know, you guys.
Replacing the heater, does that come out of that scene?
Yeah, the building, yeah.
How much would it cost to, just looking at your one, three-year list, how much does it cost to refinish the wall hog gym floor?
We do that almost every year. I just put that in there because we're gonna have to, last year we didn't do it, so we didn't get that expense. So I'm going to show you that expense for this year. I think it was around three to four thousand dollars to refinish that gym floor.
Say so with that money, would it maybe be easier or a better bet to replace the interior door, get the AC in the kitchen, get a new dishwasher in the kitchen, maybe prioritize those?
The kitchen items, that will be coming out of the kitchen fund, because we will have money for that.
Okay.
And I should have really, I was just putting some stuff down for you to show you that we've been thinking ahead. But on the kitchen items, we do have money from the kitchen, for, from the kitchen fund to pay for that.
I don't, I don't know the rest of our feels. In my thoughts, I think carpet would be low on my priority list. Not really sure that carpet is, we, you guys know, we're here every day. But I'm just thinking about the winter, we didn't have, especially with winter this year. But students coming in with muddy or wet shoes and boots kind of constantly. I think that that's going to lead to a lot of, a lot of maintenance and a lot of dirt.
Well, the reason, the reason why we actually look at the carpet, because the day, a couple of weeks ago when we did have the snow, sewers came in and they were slipping and falling down all over the place. Because it's really, when it's wet, it's slippery. And we felt that if we'd have carpet, it'll make the house quieter plus a lot safer because they're not falling. And we do have the big chapeau. We can, the days off that we have, we can run a chapeau down there. Maybe we'll like do it every time, you know, every day off.
I guess that's a question I had, how was it as far as cleaning carpet like that versus?
Well, the upkeep, we figured out it was gonna be twenty-nine hundred dollars in wax per year. And then about two weeks in labor, you know, stripping it down, putting the wax on. They put several coats of wax on it. So just the labor and the cost of wax, I thought that we'd pay for it in four or five years.
Was there recently something published from the state? They're looking at additional money coming in schools for, I think it was part three of something. It came out a couple of days ago.
Are you saying SR three money? There's SR two coming out here. And SR two's coming out and SR three's coming out this?
That's.
So we'll have money, SR two will have a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. And then SR three will have about four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Twenty percent of that has to be for learning loss.
And so then, how can we, could we?
SR two and SR three has to be COVID related.
So I think you had mentioned you could look at building with that, at construction projects, how we started with that.
So is that where we could look at the air quality and get new air conditioning?
I have bids coming in for air quality.
Okay.
They're finalizing that, those bids right now.
Could, what else could it be used for? Like, is there a possibility of deducting the down payment on maybe a bond issue for a new gym?
Yeah, yeah. New gyms are probably around sixty-six million, six point five million. And, you know, and I know that we can use some of that SR money for maybe even busing, buses. And so I look at the amount of money, like peanuts compared to what we really need. But we can look at whatever you like. And Ron, Twilight and I have a meeting in Bismarck, June third, and they talk about all that stuff.
I know it is peanuts, but you know, if we keep spending just because we need to fix little things all the time, then we'll never have enough money to do anything big. So I guess that's, that's what I am concerned with, is that we have this plan, we need to figure out how to get some of those bigger things.
I think you're right, Nicole, but we really need to stabilize the budget. If you looked, and I sent you out the budget for the last three years, and it wasn't pretty. We were in the hole every single year for three years and a lot of money. So if we can show our patrons that we're stabilizing the budget for a few years, I think that we'll have a better chance of getting a bond issue for a gym or, you know, classrooms. But I think you're right, we need to look at the big picture. But we also need to show the patrons that we are taking care of our budget.
Well, that, I agree with you, that's why, that's why I'm not for the carpet. Is that I agree with you, we need to get that done under control.
And I also think of all my business classes, that you always have to put into your business, and I call this our business, you need to upgrade your business every year because the time that you need to upgrade it, then also you have everything at once, so little by little. But I'm open to any suggestion you have. We don't need to have carpet, I just put it out there. We do have the money. And I was also looking at the labor cost because we'd pay for that carpet in a few, you know, four, four years, four or five years.
Explain to me again where the carpet would start and finish at.
Yeah, just the front door, you get carpet hallway to the main hallway in front of the stuff. And then the elementary hallway where Mrs. Swan is, all the way down to preschool, that's gonna be all carpet.
So not down the high school hallway towards the boardroom?
Yeah, that'll be all carpet. And then in front of the bathrooms and Mrs. Kierson's office, that'll be carpet. And then along elementary hallway.
So there wouldn't be any tile for left?
No, just right outside the kitchen.
How much would it cost to replace this floor?
You know what, that's in the works as well, because I've been looking at that. I'm hoping that this will last a few more years. But I do know that Adam was near their gym, put a, almost like a laminate flooring down. And it's a lot cheaper than wood. And so I'm gonna contact him and see what it costs him. But it was like a quarter, fraction of the price of what went forward. And it looked really good. So I thought he told me around thirty thousand for his gym. But don't quote me on that, and I'll find out.
If you wanted to do carpet, when, when would you have to know why so they could start on it to get it down before school?
Well, sometime this summer, I'd just like to, you know, and then we can get it in. And then we wouldn't have to put wax on it. We'll have to buff it down, get the wax off so they can put little carpet, but no more have to put a little wax on it.
Anybody have any other questions? So basically, the heater and the carpet would come out of this account.
Correct.
If he did both, how much would be left?
Seventy, twenty, twenty-six minus seventy. Forty-four, forty-four thousand left in that account.
Yeah, because for both bids, it looks like we have to, as a school, get rid of that floor first before they put the carpet down.
Yep, they have to get the wax off the floor, yeah. Roughly about forty-six thousand left in that account.
So if they fix the heater and did the carpet, there'd be forty-six thousand dollars left.
Right, and the iKeating bid was lower, lower if you remember.
And that would be in the squares? I know we replaced some carpet in some of the classrooms. Is there any of the classrooms that are in, that need carpet again also?
Well, that's part of the one to three years, we will, in the future, we will.
Are a lot of the schools, because I think I see that anyone's being built and they're going to that laminate flooring and waxing the floors still. So going back to carpet when everyone's going away from it, I just, the cost benefit, I guess.
Yeah, it is labor intensive with waxing and buffing it.
Well, when you wax the floors, don't you just stay up for a certain long time?
Yeah.
Yeah, for like four or five.
It takes about a week to kind of get done.
I know there's a lot of things we'd like to do to school, and you have to keep up with what you have to. We start wanting, you wanted to start building an estate to do some of the projects like Nicole says, but you have to still fix and maintain what you've got, so.
We'd just be glad if they had a plan. Like at least I just feel better saying, oh, this fits in with our plan. Like, yeah, you're right, we do have the money. And we'll be able to pay for the bigger things, but, but we don't, we don't have a plan. And I don't, I just don't like using a plan just because we have them, even if it's just to maintain it. I just like to have a bigger plan. I want, I want so many of these things, we have a list. And if we keep using them on things, I, I, and not, I mean, my list is not made the same as everybody else's. But this to me is low priority, but to have a bullet might not be so, you know, it's a board decision. That's just my opinion.
But I think he was saying too, a lot of those things are coming out of a different pot of money. So it's hard to determine what, what's coming out of the building fund, because it's not all prioritized that way.
Oh, I don't think this is, this is coming out of the line item, not out of this, not out of the capital expenditures fund.
I think you were saying because of the kitchen stuff.
Yes, right.
Oh, yeah, the kitchen stuff. But asphalt and student parking lot, this floor, which I have great complaints about since my kids started here. Replacing the front doors, the wall hog gym, parking for football and baseball, buses. Those are all, to in my opinion, those are all more important. Along with the really big items like a new gym, getting something figured out with portable. They're temporary and they've been there twenty years and.
We were just talking before the meeting, they're actually not gonna be paid off till what year?
Twenty thirty-three. So we have those two bonds, you know, one bond will be paid off in twenty twenty-five, and the other one's twenty thirty-three. If you want to table it again, that's fine. I'm just like, I said, I really think that we do need to upgrade some things in our school. And I'll keep on looking, prioritizing what that list and I'll show you where the money's gonna be going. But I'm just really happy that the budget this year will be in the black and we're looking good. So, and next year is gonna be another challenge.
Unless somebody wants to make a motion for the carpet, we could table it. Let Mr. Gertie keep working on his list here, advertise it.
I'm not, I want you to go. Anyone else?
I think, yeah, if we could just get a prioritized list and then by June seventh, make that decision for him at our next board meeting so that he can get it going for the summer if we do approve it.
That's all I have. Just want to talk more about the budget, but I said, the numbers are in and we are working hard to balance it out for next year.
No, and you've done a lot of work and we appreciate it. We've seen a lot of improvements over, you know, the last two years, so that's, that's outstanding. What I'd like to see is maybe a quote on a better security for that front door. Just, just making that a more secure entry. Maybe with all the doors, like.
No, I think that's good. I just wanted to touch base, but I wanted to make sure you were done with the carpet budget stuff before I, were you done with your?
Yeah.
Okay. I just didn't want to, I didn't want to interrupt or change the subject. But I think one of the first things you started talking about was, um, Robin Rezner resigned.
Right.
Right. From basketball.
Right, just the head coach position, she wants to be the JV coach.
Okay, and then?
No, JV coach, yeah.
I know, I know you said that you're going to advertise, how quickly can we get that position open? I'm just trying to be proactive because we do so much in the summer with counts.
Absolutely, we need someone today.
Right.
So I'm gonna advertise it right away.
Can we maybe, and I guess it's really gonna depend on your guys' schedules, but can we maybe interview as the applications come in? So we're not waiting, you know, a week or two weeks till we close it and then?
I'm hoping to have someone hired within a week.
Okay, perfect.
We, like you said, they do a lot of stuff in the summer.
Right.
We need, there's counts, there's TPs everywhere. So yeah, we need to have a head coach in place as soon as possible. And hopefully, we'll have that by next week.
Okay, great. I, yeah, I was just thinking about that because I know I've seen my boys bring their paperwork for, you know, basketball year.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, wonderful, that'd be great.
Anybody have any questions on the bills? I know Nicole just had one and I have this to try to answer it, but that's gotta be a record. I was half when I saw, the first thing I saw was I only have one question. Well, I could have answered it, but I didn't want to give the wrong information, that's all. That's why I haven't tried to answer it. There's nothing, you know, earth shattering, I guess, in those and stuff.
Did you get any answers to the software program?
I did.
Perfect.
And come to find out, the way that it's set up in the system, it's set up, she's asking about the activity balance sheet.
Oh.
Because it stays the same every time.
Yeah.
You can do it monthly, but it's set up in the computer to do it manually. So if you would like, I would be glad to go back through and, you know.
So the numbers we're looking at really aren't accurate, true?
No.
Right, well, because it closes at the end of the year.
And are you talking school year or calendar year?
Everything on the software runs by the school year. I mean, you can use whatever year you want, but we do accounting by the school year. Like I said, I could go through and regenerate those reports just for activity on a monthly level or maybe just go back for the last three months and seven, two times, if you would like that.
I think that would be great information. I didn't know they had that ability to do that.
I didn't either.
I was looking at the, you know, at the other reports that you sent us with the, who goes now? Or those expenditure reports show those outs.
Yeah.
They don't show the ins, but they do show the outs, so you get a better idea.
How far would you like me to go back? Your call. I mean, I go back until, I mean, there's August, if that's what you want.
Beginning of March, maybe, just three months, March, April?
I don't, do, do the people who are in charge of each fund, do they get some kind of different report? So like, let's say I'm in basketball, do I know how much I have and how it counts through the year?
The only time they know is when I go and tell her, can you run this for me? Because everything's still together.
Great.
I actually had her go back five years for girls' basketball so I could figure out. Because the fundraising and school stuff is all thrown in one.
Yeah, apparently when the other business manager was here and she had a public accounting firm go through, they deleted all of the fundraising accounts and they all just have one account. And that's not moving back.
And I don't agree with that at all, it should be separate.
It should be separate.
For each sport or activity?
And I even went back into the accounting system and looked up deleted account numbers, like they're gone.
Wow.
So it's gonna take a lot of, I mean, honestly, if we're talking, it's like the bigger sport accounts. It's not like every single activity, like baseball, football, volleyball, I mean, those sports. And that's what I wanted to have, wanted to do the last two summers, but I haven't gotten it.
Because I just wondered then if it would be actually helpful to have a whole year's worth and then maybe if we could provide that information to those people that are in charge of that, so they have a good idea? Because?
I think what I'm gonna do now, and I was asked this a couple of weeks ago, to post one in the staff room. So if I print it out by the month, like right now, we're looking at everything for April. I printed it out for April and then I would just put it in the staff room. And then if they have any questions, they can always come to me and we can detail it out.
Sure.
Like I did for the morning, so.
Sure.
I would do it for the, you know, starting in July, if that's what you guys want.
To me, the way they are now, they're meaningless.
Yeah, I agree.
End of last year.
I agree.
July first would be the first month.
Oh, sure.
Or our year.
Say about last July.
No, not this, well, July of twenty twenty.
No, I just, I just said the way they are now, it's meaningless.
I guess I would like, I, I think I would like all since July. It seems silly, but it just better, it's a good situation on that. And then, you know, I think you've come, like it's come such a long way. The reports have done a great job of, when I first started, our first time on the board, the financials are so, just so much more clean and you get, you know, they actually balance and everything's good. I think that, that one area that we're still struggling is in that activity fund. Because there's just so many, there's so many negatives. And then there's things that don't make sense, like classes that have already graduated that have balances and, and so that would be the one area I think to, you know.
And I can still often mention when they burn insulation, it strikes me directly. I deleted it all, it started all over eighteen times and I still can't find it.
It's scary.
For me, it is, because I don't ever move on unless I get it together, so... And then there's two different, or two tuition agreements to hold on.
Any other questions?
Sorry.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills.
I'll second it.
Aberley?
Yes.
Lines?
Yes.
Munoz?
Yes.
Walt?
Yes.
Okay, we have a tuition agreement for student ninety-one out.
Ninety-one? Yeah.
It's ninety-one and ninety-two.
Yeah, look at the actual forms, there's one about it. It's ninety-one.
Oh, okay.
Typically, we have not been approving these.
Well, I question this because... How do I ask this? Okay, are we approving it because... Just because somebody is a teacher in Minot or for Minot Public Schools who are going to approve their child's going to school there? Even if it's not the same school that they teach at?
That's a good question.
Right.
That ninety-one's not that key.
Yeah, I did, I just saw that, I didn't get...
I think they both are. I think they both are to be listed.
I missed it, I thought just one was...
Is this the first year for ninety-one out?
I don't know who it is. Yeah, they've been there.
Sorry, we should add it to the agenda if it sounds like they came up with a policy.
That was a very preliminary.
Oh, preliminary?
Yeah, nothing set in stone, just to kind of, something to get us started in the right direction.
Yeah, we should look at it, I mean...
Yeah.
Thank you.
Told me to add something to the agenda next month, is that what you're asking from now? I don't know what you're asking.
I was asking Mrs. Munoz about the policy that her and Danny were working on for addressing these issues. And she said they had started something and have a preliminary, very preliminary draft.
When would these have to be active?
Um, I mean, I guess we can table them if you want, we have a policy for next year.
Yes, I agree.
Do we have a ready one next year?
I don't want to be the one to come up with a policy yet, you know, I have a lot to talk about it.
Yeah, you guys were just supposed to put something together.
Yeah, we have something, so...
So let's review all that.
Okay. Yeah.
Well, these ones are here and if we don't have a current policy in place, then we need to, I would say, vote on them. From where we stand now, we can't push them out and then talk about a policy and then try to approve or deny based on a policy we're now creating. So I would make a motion to not approve ninety-one out.
Well, according to what we've been doing, her mother works for...
At the same school we were talking.
Oh, do we got our policy, that's what I don't know.
That's what we were discussing previously.
Have we, I don't know that that was, I don't know that that's what we've been doing. I don't know, I don't know that I've ever been told where someone's working. I don't know.
Okay, we have a motion to disapprove ninety-one, do we have a second?
If there's no second, can we table it or is it just, how does this work?
Yeah, otherwise we'd have to have to have a motion to approve it if we don't get that, we table it. So you're not, you have to be active on this one, do you?
No, not tuition agreements, they can come at any time. The ones that are taken up are all free.
One more time, do we have a second to deny ninety-one out? If not, the motion fails.
I'll make a motion to table ninety-one out for clarification.
I'll second that.
So ninety-two, same thing, table it?
Yes, I'll make a motion to table ninety-two.
Mrs. Hanson?
All righty, I should have passed out there the teacher contract, I'm on the cap ball, sorry. Hard ways down the line. We offered a contract to Jenna Johnson. She's got years of experience, so that's kind of nice to get to, but very lucky to find somebody again. She highly recommended the interview and now she's going to do a level, so... Offered a contract.
Was this the only one to apply, were there other applicants?
And I, I told her, I said I don't want her to think that that's the one reason she got hired. She, she's very good, on paper and in person, very good. A lot of schools looking for music teachers, so we're going to get, we'll look for a lot of them, getting someone.
I'll make a motion to approve the hiring of the elementary music teacher.
I will second that. Aberley?
Yes.
Lines?
Yes.
Munoz?
Yes.
Walt?
Yes.
Okay, the second thing I have is graduation coming up pretty soon, so just want to check who is going to be there? The board, so we can kind of...
I, I won't be there, yeah, Tom.
I will be here.
And I'll check my dad. Yep, it'll be on the stage.
We'll have a chair, yeah, just like a couple of years ago, we'll have the stage and chairs for you. I want to add a way to...
Very nice. But did you, you know, Cragman, is that the name of the group now? They just left, did you get anything from them or...
No, we won't get anything for a long month.
Any Cragman counting? I, I think overall, I'd say it went pretty well. I think they were happy to see some of the things that were, you know, kind of started and put on hold this year, but are coming in the future. Or are not, I'm sure he's there, but we don't have the data, like we should have to prove some of it. But I think overall, they were pretty happy with some of the changes we made and where we're headed, so... But like I say, I asked yesterday if there was any kind of preliminary we could get for tonight. And she said it would be probably a month or maybe a little more because there have backed up a lot of people doing the visits and stuff, so...
Okay.
No. No, I mean, I don't, at this point, I don't think that it would make sense to even have a meeting.
I think we could take both of them off.
Yeah. I don't know if that's a committee that's going to continue next year or not, so...
With that, our next board meeting is June ninth.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second it.